Okay, I believe we're set to go. I'm in, I'm ready to record. I'll call the regular meeting of the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for Monday, January 12, 2015 to order and ask for a little silence. Thank you. Mr. Farrell, would you need this to be turned over?
I am ready. I ask for a pledge. (inaudible) United States of America, distributed all for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business would be to approve the consent agenda. And actually, we have two items under the December 8 meetings and the setting up of public hearing for the annexation of the newly acquired Pittsburgh Forest property. Any changes or anything to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor of the consent agenda? Is it present? I oppose. You've been opposed, the consent agenda is approved. And now we need to go on to the regular agenda. With that, we have a public hearing. I have the whole one out of the new business and the managers' update and close session. Any other additions, changes, modifications to the agenda before we approve that?
Motion to approve regular meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? None of those, the agenda's approved. Let's see here, I have, the clerk has given me no citizens to speak under citizen matters before we can move into the public hearing. Resoning request for the used property, because we need a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? None opposed, we are in public hearing and guess, Mr. Bass, are you going to introduce this part? There he is, thank you.
Yes, sir. This is resoning 2014-02 as amended. The proposal was originally submitted to rezone from R15 to R10. However, you have in your packet there the amended application to the zoning district of R12. We had a previous public hearing back in October, but since the application was amended, state law requires a new and separate public hearing. So that's why it's in front of you tonight. I won't go into all the details. Nothing has changed from the previous submission with the exception of the requested zoning district, same land area, same size. And the primary difference with the R10 and R12 was the R10 district would allow for a multifamily-type apartment complex with special use permit. However, that is not a possibility in the R12 district. The difference between the existing R15 district and the R12 district is that you can have duplexes and our pocket neighborhood is permitted by right in the R12 district. The planning board also took a look at this revised proposal at its regularly scheduled meeting last week on January 5th and is recommending approval of this proposed resoning request.
entertain any questions? Thank you. Any questions from the board on this one?
Question, correct me if I'm incorrect, but I'm thinking that there are some other differences in land use available to R12 versus R15. And my reading of the chart indicates that medical offices and other professional offices are permitted by special use permit. Can you, is that, am I reading that right?
In the R12?
Yeah.
I don't have that committed to memory, I'm sorry, but...
Can imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that document here, just to confirm.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Thanks. Any other questions for the board?
We have one other. What would be the maximum number of dwelling units permitted in R12? And would there be any difference in the number of units between the single-family residence type or the two-family residence type?
I haven't done a rough calculation, but I don't have those notes in front of me.
So... Pergat Force has 30 lots, 37, yeah.
Okay.
Page two.
So 37 lots, but would that translate to dwelling units also, i.e. 37 resident, two-family residences?
The way the table reads, the 12,000 square foot size gets applied to the individual unit.
Okay. So whether it's single-family or multifamily, there's only going to be 37 dwelling units.
Right.
Okay.
At least that's my interpretation, you know, if somebody were to argue.
Somebody would have to argue with you?
Yeah.
And if they didn't like your answer, they'd go to the board of adjustment.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Does he have to get, wish to address the board for...
I have one question. Could you tell, I'm sorry, thanks, what you had told Commissioner Fiocco about the offices? Can you repeat that, please?
General office, medical office, according to the table of permitted uses, are allowed per special use permit. And the special use permit is a quasi-judicial process, the way it's set up in ordinance that the town board would have to approve.
Okay, but by special use.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So not by right, the duplexes in the pocket neighborhood are permitted by right, they can, you know, into R12s and all that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we do have one speaker who has asked to be heard on this public hearing. That would be Mr. Wilson, 233 Churchwood Lane.
I must admit that I am not familiar with the regulations and the culture of speaking, so if there's any procedure I should follow, please let me know.
No, this is your opportunity to be heard about any concerns or questions you have with the proposed rezoning.
I appreciate that. Clearly, there's one person speaking against and Mr. Hughes speaking for. He and I are neighbors, and as a neighbor, I hate to stand up here and, you know, resist his plans to what he wants to do with his land. But as an adjacent property owner of 233 Churchwood Lane, which is the house directly behind his, which includes the right-of-way easement that will become Churchwood Loop to allow traffic in and out of this, I think that my piece of property and my house and my family will be significantly impacted with the change from R15 to R12. Now, the attorney said it's his opinion that 37 dwelling units will be there, and of course, that's subject to legal debate. And if a builder does buy this, and it is the builder's attorney opinion that 74 units could be built with two cars per dwelling, now we're up to 150 vehicles, figure two ways in, one by my land and one out running as part of Cornwallis Road, that's 75 cars potentially per day that would be traveling what is right now a one-story driveway from Churchwood Lane into my house. So I'm concerned about that. And I'm also concerned that the entire neighborhood, as it is right now, is zoned R15. The subdivisions that we're in, the 10 acres behind it, and much of the neighborhood along the 15501 is zoned for R15 right now. And, you know, if it was zoned differently when I made the decision to purchase in 2010, my decision may have been impacted by that. So I do hope that you take into consideration my thoughts as an impacted citizen of the town, you know, that would feel an impact by this adjustment if a builder comes in and has a different opinion, and then the traffic does increase significantly through my property. And I do appreciate your time.
Thank you. I just have one, just like, you chalk this up to a curiosity question to the applicant. Mr. Hughes doesn't mind. I'm wondering what, you know, you withdrew your application to rezone this to R10 and decided that you'd rather do R12. Would you share with us what motivated you to do that? Why you chose to change that?
I didn't think that was a good place for a fall.
Okay. So this is your personal decision to...
And the neighbors complained that I was wrong with my neighbors.
Okay, so that's just a voluntary accommodation to, after hearing some input from here. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have no other questions of the applicant or the planner. We have no other speakers. entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? I'm going to see our... Only order of old business, which is Stormwater Administration Manual report from...
Good evening. This is a follow-up from discussion we had several meetings ago about our stormwater ordinance and some kind of housekeeping we're doing to get the stormwater ordinance to where it needs to be according to what the provisions are. And so this Stormwater Administrative Manual, it is required by the ordinance, and it just took this much time for me to essentially develop it. Although we've moved forward with issuing stormwater permits pursuant to the ordinance, this is still something that we needed to do. I'm not going to go point by point, section by section in the document, which is draft. I'll just quickly go over the highlights. The real purpose of this is to make it clear to developers and landowners what the process is to follow our ordinance to get a stormwater discharge permit. The ordinance is not an easy read, so it's very difficult to figure out what it is that's required. So that's the intent of this manual. So hopefully, if you manage to read most of it, it should read reasonably easily and in decent stages that's inherently understandable by anyone. So if you found anything to be uncertain or awkward or unclear, just please let me know. But I'm still reviewing it as a draft, reviewing it as a draft. It does have quite a few appendices which are not included in this document. I can provide those either way to the commissioners. So bottom line is, there's a lot of legal stuff that's required here in the back end of it. There's technical stuff in the front end of what's required for my review. And in the back end, it's the as-built drawings, the operations and maintenance manuals, the Declaration of Maintenance Covenant, which has to be recorded at the county, as well as the as-built. So there's some legal barriers in the way before you can get a certificate of occupancy. One of the biggest questions basically for you is the surety piece. We have not required to date bonding or surety or performance surety for long-term maintenance of the best management practices. We just have not required that because we just haven't gotten there to decide how to handle that. Mr. Messick has given us some ideas on ways to do that, if we wish to go that route, through cash, bonds, there's three methods. And that's something we can discuss because it does put a financial burden on developers or on landowners, as well as myself, and just getting the administrative paperwork accomplished. So moving forward, I would recommend that we maybe wait on the long-term maintenance surety issue so we can see how it's going with these new BNP's getting built. That's my recommendation, but it doesn't mean that's the rule we go with and that we do require construction surety so that, and performance, so that they get built properly. Then we can release the funds as soon as I do my final inspection and that we are assured that it's built properly, then we can release the funds. There is a provision in the ordinance that says HOAs, homeowner associations, must have long-term escrow. To me, that's a little easier to do because that's only for HOAs, that's not for individuals or single businesses, it's for actual HOAs, which will require some more administrative work, but I think there's a valid reason to do it that way. Mostly based on my experience, HOAs are not aware of the BNP's and they don't have funding when the BNP's require maintenance. And it's a big surprise to them when they realize they have to come up with some money to maintain the best management practice. So it also has a flow chart that I have to look at carefully to make sure it's easy to understand. At first blush, it looked a little confusing to me, so I have to go over it with the consultant. Jewel Engineering helped me put this together with a small contract. And there's a few other things I'm going to look at and clarify. But anyway, for now, it's just for your consideration as a draft, if you, I guess if you like it, the recommendation is to, I recommend to approve it, and then I could come back to you for a final, if you wish, or if you want to keep it as a draft and see the final product, I can do that as well. And I can also provide all the appendices. I have one copy of the Declaration of Maintenance Covenant tonight, actually I have two copies, and the rest I would have to get to you via email or hard copy.
I would like the appendices developed. And I hear what you're saying about a draft, work in progress. I do have some comments, but I don't want to necessarily get bogged down this evening because I can easily provide this feedback to you offline in an email.
Sure.
Otherwise, we could be here for a while.
Be happy to take comments, email, and I can come back and describe the comments and describe what I did with them.
Yeah.
No problem.
Is something else you see almost?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. One of the things I would note, and I just, this is a philosophical approach to this kind of information, is we've got an ordinance that says, here's what's required, and then this touches on, tries to explain what that ordinance is saying, and then in some cases, I think, is regurgitating the ordinance.
Yeah, it sure is.
Yeah. And so what I think is a problem from an administrative perspective is if the ordinance changes, somebody's got to remember, oh, yeah, we have the exact same language that needs to change in this other document. So if there's a way not to be redundant, there's less risk of the documents being in conflict with each other in the future. So that's a general philosophical statement that I would have.
Can I guess, to help me connect the dots here, make sure I'm on the right page, this is an administrative manual that we've adopted that supports an ordinance that we adopted over a year ago, when we put in the Jordan Lake requirements for new development. Is that right?
That's correct.
On the right subject here.
Yep.
And what this is, is that becomes now law. This is a sort of a how-to manual to help people who are in the business of development understand what they have to do.
Correct. Including myself, understanding what it is.
It appears to me that it's somewhat useful in its current form, even though it's incomplete and the board hasn't approved it. So I guess if there's a question anywhere in my room, it's, what's the sense of urgency that we, the board, finally approved this? Can we wait till we see the appendices? And are you still using it as a draft to help guide people through their processes?
I have not, I'm not using this at all with the public.
Yeah, okay.
This internal document.
Okay.
At this point, the way I issue permits now is I tell them what the ordinance says and just say, you know, it's not ad hoc, but it's not well-defined. So the intent here is to be kind of well-defined, including a checklist of, you know, what do I have to submit to the town to get a permit? You know, what's the goalpost look like?
Okay.
So that's the intent of this.
Okay, well, that's it. Now I understand that. I would just comment that this appears to be a very well-written document. I think you did a good job. Like Commissioner Fiocco, I'd like to see it at 100% before we adopt it, unless there's some compelling sense of urgency to do that sooner. And sort of, how much time do you think you're talking about now in the time you would be able to take the draft off here and call it a finished product?
I would guess the next meeting or about a month from now. I'd like to try to get this thing kind of ironed out, finished out, but if there's comments from the board, you can shoot them to me over the next week or two. I'll take those and do my own work and finish up the appendices, make sure all the appendices are correct and in good order.
Okay, I understand. I think my last question for a lot of others is, would it be correct to assume that this will eventually get incorporated into the UDO as part of the Unified Development Ordinance since it relates to land use management?
Development, yeah.
This will become a chapter of the UDO at some point.
Correct, your chapter or article or whatever the UDO, yeah, I had to talk, isn't that correct, Stuart? This is a stormwater ordinance, it's kind of development related, where it would fit in there nicely.
Or is it the ordinance of the UDO?
The ordinance.
This is the administrative manual, which is a requirement.
Yeah, this is more like a policy document.
So it would not be in UDO? This is a how-to cookbook to help people walk through the process and would not be part of UDO, okay, so.
Our stormwater ordinance states that we will have this document, and basically it indicates that we will provide applicants with the requirements of an application, the submission schedule, the fee schedule, a copy of the ordinance, and then instruct them as to how and where they can gain access to the design manual, which is the state BMP manual. So it has those five requirements.
Okay, well, I guess I, my preference for action tonight would just be to, as we've already done, that you've invited us to email you any comments we have and let you continue to refine the document and bring it back to us two weeks, a month, when you're comfortable that it's ready for final approval. If that's the consensus of the board, that everybody feel good with that?
And with a special look at the surety issue, it's our choice. It's not a requirement.
Yeah.
Long-term maintenance for BNP's.
Yeah, having wrestled with one of those in my past, that, you know, you might want to include Nancy and Mr. Messick and how you, who's going to be the custodian of, you know, of letters of credit and bonds and whatnot, that who's going to keep the calendar up when those things are expiring? That's something we need to figure out that long enough to be careful of those things. The experience of losing track of one, it won't be a good experience, so. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Wilson?
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Is there a land of old business or a lot of the new business is the wastewater allocation request from Walker Auto Parts?
This is an allocation request for wastewater based on our adopted policy. This is a small request of only 125 gallons per day to serve a approximately 6,750 square foot retail building. And the site is actually just across the street here, the Foodline Shopping Center. And you have in the packet there the request letter as well as some information spreadsheet there with previous allocations granted and just the plot plan there of the site. The recommendation is for approval of this wastewater allocation request and the amount specified. A site plan has been submitted and is currently under review, and we expect that that should be on the board's regular agenda session sometime next month for review and approval.
Okay. I don't have any questions about this one. Does any other board member have questions?
It's the proposed use?
It's the Auto Parts store.
Okay, gotcha.
Step recommendation is for approval of this. Do you hear a motion of effect? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None being opposed, the allocation is awarded. Let's see, that brings us to managers' capital projects. I didn't see any package on it, so I guess we'll get it through tonight.
This is a reminder, you have scheduled a February 2nd retreat, less than Monday, and you've scheduled that date along 8:30 a.m. until into the afternoon, probably four or three or so, or whenever you feel appropriate to break. This is one time, unless I hear otherwise, providing a full lunch. That doesn't have to be very greasy, or making subs or something along those lines. If somebody has some other suggestions, we're just very open to that. You'll recall that we are seeking assistance with providing some input regarding our wastewater treatment plant. And Fred and the operative team of advisors have met and reviewed some proposals, and they'll be interviewing possible contractors on January 29. January 29, P E R interviews still scheduled?
Yes. Yes, 10 o'clock and 11:30.
Okay. So we'll be providing feedback... So we'll be providing feedback on that, I think we've received two applicants, and we may look at a third.
We received four, and we selected two.
We'll select and review.
To review, and if there's a problem, we got a third out there.
Thanks. So moving on to that.
I'm sorry, I was writing, what was that application of?
That was a, I guess, a request for qualifications for a firm to assist us with potential upgrade or expansion issues with our existing wastewater treatment plant. Locally, on a smaller level, we've had two breaks, two watering breaks slash leaks since last time we met. There was one in mid-December in the traffic circle, and then there was another one just this past weekend on Thompson Street. The one, the one in the traffic circle, I believe, the traffic circle was repaired, but we're not really satisfied with resurfacing job in there, so we're going to try to work out another, I don't want to call it patching job, but another resurfacing job, again, the admin side of the circle, the admin building side of the circle. So we have a bump there, and I think we can do a little bit better. The one on Thompson Street, there's a small patch that we had to open up to repair, a water service, a leaking water service, and so as soon as the weather cooperates, we'll be fixing, we'll be fixing that one as well. In both cases, our crews did a pretty good job of catching up and fixing them, in really optimal conditions, so.
Good question, did that, did the one of the circle have any relationship to Hillsborough Street project, or was it farther down?
No, that was not a direct relationship to many of the work, many of the new transmission line.
Yeah, as far as, it was farther south of the circle.
Yeah, it was kind of a leftover mine, there's probably a bit of a spaghetti bowl as far as some lines over there, and some older ones, and this one, this one suffered leaking problems similar to what we've worked out in some of the other areas. It's that type of year, things kind of wear on hardware and springs and that's hot, so. We have internally, as far as staff is concerned, we've completed, we've completed some performance reviews and individual strategic planning with department heads this, over the course of this past week and a half. And I think key to that really isn't so much a performance review, as it is a strategic individual strategic planning session with each department head to try to key in on some of the things that we want to work on over the course of next year. And we take then some of that information, and then hopefully feed some of that into some of the discussion that we'll be having at the retreat, but then overall, really kind of looking at ways to focus on the strengths and attacks and weaknesses in what we do here in the basis. So, really good, I think, across the board, we had some really good conversations, and I think we've got a really good team that's been working for us here, so really looking forward to next year. I have, if you recall, I think maybe the, this is the last time we had met was the first December meeting, and we discussed briefly Pittsburgh Place, and talks are continuing with Pittsburgh Place, and what they want to do with that property, and Mr. Messick and I have been meeting with them over the course of the next couple of weeks, and coming up with a recommendation on that. So, that process, at least in one shape, kind of appears to be ready to move off center a little bit. We've got some other development projects in progress, and we're looking forward to recording out on those, but we have to let those perk relay a little bit. And then also too, I would point out in your packet, it was discussed at previous meeting, the date of the Christmas party, or Christmas parade, the date of the Christmas parade, and we've managed to collect some dates of area Christmas parades, and certainly if we need or would like to review how we fit into that, then certainly that's open for discussion, but maybe for future reference, at least we have that information ready to go for when it's appropriate. And also too, I'd point you in your packet to two other items, one being a memo from the finance officer regarding some information that we should have from the school of government, some rate study, I think there's been some good work that's been put into that, and we'll be having some discussion on that probably by the next week.
By the 26th.
By the 26th.
It will be ready then.
And then also too, Mr. Royal had included the executive summary from the Jordan Lake partnership application. I think we've recorded out on that a few times in recent meetings, but I know I have to read this stuff repeatedly and understand the topic, and I think if anything, it's a good way for us to do that with that piece. And with that, I would just go back and entertain any of the comments, questions, concerns, or anything. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank Ms. Endly for her moving the ball forward on the rate issue, I appreciate that. The forward here from the 26th. Any questions for the manager on any of that? EDC updates, I don't have anything, there's an EDC board meeting tomorrow morning, so I'll be at that, and some things may emerge from that that I'll share with the board, but I don't have anything new as we speak. RPO, anybody have any?
I don't think so.
Sure, okay. Salt Waste Advisory has been sort of quiet, is anything sparked up on that with the new county board? No, okay. Okay, fairgrounds? Downtown Merchants Association?
The PBA, as I think Beth mentioned several meetings ago, was, is very interested in doing something with the Christmas parade date. It is on the 1st Sunday, and they'd like to, their preference would be to move that to the 2nd Sunday, so that they could have two events. They think the Christmas parade actually takes from their first Sunday, so perhaps it's something we could discuss at the retreat, see what we think.
Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be a good thing.
Yeah, because they reiterated that at the last meeting that I attended.
Yeah, they first just said that you have them on different days, and that provides them with two events that draw people attention, that's had all in one, and that's a really important time of year for merchants.
I thought I heard one comment that moving it to a week later was too close to the holiday period, a lot of people are already built their holiday travel plans and whatnot, but maybe the Saturday before, I'd say there's already a couple of other municipalities that are doing it on Saturday the 6th. Perhaps that's on our short list of things that you sort of is, having it the day before for some productive suggestion. Yeah, maybe the retreat is a good place to hash that out. Okay. Any other updates about any of that? Okay, we have Commissioner Concerns, and then a closed session. And before we get into Commissioner Concerns, I would invite any commissioner who would like to ask me questions about the recent letter to the editor that I wrote, to do that during the Commissioner Concerns portion, and not save that for the closed session, I think the closed session is specifically set aside for the attorney to offer us an update on pending litigation, and any discussion about letters that I have written to the press more appropriately discussed in open session, so I invite you to, if you have questions to ask with me now, and I'll do my best to respond to them. And with that, we will go into Commissioner Concerns, and I'll ask Commissioner Farrell first to offer his concerns.
I don't have any concerns right now, other than the paragraph, I just got the email, because I had a problem with my email, but a question about going in closed session, if this is a personnel matter, it should be in closed session, shouldn't it?
To what extent? To what extent would it be a personnel matter?
The mayor, any comments on this? I mean, have we not gone to closed session before?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable doing that, if y'all have questions, it may, ask them now, I'll be happy to answer them.
I'm sure I have questions, like I said, I just got the information an hour ago, so I'm not too prepared. I did not have email, like I said, since just before Christmas.
Okay, and then I would also extend an invitation to anybody who prefers not to discuss it in an open session, I'd be happy to schedule one-on-one meetings with anybody who has any concerns about anything I've said, communicated to the press, if you'd rather not discuss it in open session. I don't think it's appropriate to do in closed session, I'd be happy to meet with you one-on-one at your convenience, so if you want to.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary to go one-on-one with it, but I do have some concerns upon what I've just read regarding, you know, I understand the mayor is supposed to be a part of this board, or part of this family. I'm not, I'm a little discouraged about the competence that our staff or the competence the mayor may have in the board, I'm just really confused on some of these articles.
Okay, so if you want to take more time to absorb that information and ask your questions at the next meeting, I'd be happy to do that too.
I have a comment, I don't understand why we can't have that, discuss that in closed session. Is that, would that be an option for us, Mr. Messick?
Yes ma'am, I think it could be.
Because I do have some concerns with both of those.
Excuse me, if the issue is the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness requirement, or removal of a member of the public body, is not to be considered in closed session?
Well, I think some of the things that were said in there is related to personnel. And I don't think that that would be appropriate to be discussed other than in closed session, because it is related to personnel, at least in that letter, according to what was written, it did reference personnel.
No, I defer to the attorney, we don't have, we don't have that on the agenda for the night as an item, we didn't have any agenda. If you want to, if you want to pursue that in closed session, I'm happy to do that to the extent I remain comfortable, but I reserve the right to curtail the discussion, if I think we're violating the open meetings law and discussing things, it would be better discussed in open session.
So I don't have a problem with the open meetings law, but if it's personnel, it would be fair to talk about personnel we should have covered, and according to what is written in the letter, it is in reference to personnel in some portions of it.
Okay, well, let's just proceed and go through Commissioner Concerns, and anybody who's got a question they're comfortable asking, ask it, if you're not comfortable, hold it for later, and like I said, we can, we can take them one at a time, and it depends on your comfort level, and my comfort level, and the attorney's comfort level, about whether or not it's an appropriate discussion for a closed session, or it's more than likely discussed in an open session. So let's just, let's just take it one step at a time, and we'll just move through it that way, so. Mr. Farrell, you have anything else?
No, no related to that.
Okay. Mr. Baldwin?
I don't have anything.
My concern and interest is a status report on where we stand with our concept for reviewing small area plans. I know we had said that as a priority to accomplish by the end of the year, so I just wanted to know, are we close? Will we be seeing something soon? Have we been able to make progress on that?
I know I said I could do that without any problems, but.
I don't think you said that, I think you said there would be problems.
Yeah, the past couple of months have just been jam-packed, and so I actually had a conversation with our consulting firm that's working on the UDO last Tuesday, I think, and we brainstormed some ideas, several options, and they're in the process of fleshing something out, and we're going to get something here in writing within the next week.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Baldwin?
I don't have anything particular, other than, I do have one question, and I think we can talk about that in public, regarding the comprehensive plan, you said that the town does not have a comprehensive plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, why do you say the town doesn't have a comprehensive plan?
Well, it's because I've personally never seen it, I have, my history and experience comes from another municipality where I actually participated in the preparation or review of the comprehensive plan. I had a minor role in that, in reviewing chapters on adequate public facilities and sustainability and the like, and when the term adopted comprehensive plan appears in the document before me, that brings to mind that 200-some page document that I had the opportunity to participate in in a previous jurisdiction. We got a memorandum from the attorney today that, where he outlined the North Carolina statutory definition of the term comprehensive plan, and how it relates to municipal governments, and I now better understand his characterization of comprehensive plan with a small C as opposed to comprehensive plan with a big C. And I can see how that distinction made it, may have made him comfortable in accepting texts authored by developers attorney and put into our ordinances, he may have, as one attorney to another, found that that was a comfortable thing to do. Although I think they, and it helped me get a little more comfortable with it, but I still think that when you use the term adopted comprehensive plan, the memo the attorney provided would have been much more helpful if I had seen that a month, a month and a half ago, so that I had that information, would have saved me an hour looking through all of my files and folders for a plan that I thought I had inadvertently failed to read and discover. And so I went through the town's website, looking for the adopted comprehensive plan, I went through all the folders where I have collected our various land use planning documents, looking for the adopted comprehensive plan. And arrived at the conclusion that we didn't have one. And then later did I get, did we see the memo that explains how attorneys talk about comprehensive plans? So that's how I came to the position that I took in that letter that I wrote. And I still, you know, would say that we don't have a adopted comprehensive plan, capital C. Now, based on Mr. Messick's explanation, I understand that the collection of all of our various land use planning documents, whether it be the land use plan, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, the stormwater plan, all of those, according to general statutes, can be characterized as our comprehensive plans. But I question whether or not, I certainly didn't, you know, if I was voting on that ordinance, and making the assertion that I believe that the developer's master plan and the rezoning was consistent with all of that collection of plans, I certainly didn't review all those plans against that ordinance, and I wouldn't have been able to certify that, lacking the knowledge that that's what was meant by that term, so. to certify that, lacking the knowledge that that's what was meant by that term. So that's my response to that question. And I'm better informed today, but still not happy with the wording in that in the ordinance.
The statute requires that there be a statement that it is or is not in compliance or consistent with a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is not what you understood it to be.
Correct.
So.
That memo would have been much more useful six weeks ago than it was this afternoon.
But you had no doubt on the issue as to what a comprehensive plan was? Because I heard you just explain how you had doubt, yet you expressed in public certainty about what a comprehensive plan is and what it isn't, and went on to say that we don't have one, yet we do.
Yeah, I understand, I understand Mr. Messick's interpretation of that, yeah.
Do you doubt the interpretation or the legality of his interpretation?
I don't doubt that two attorneys would agree that we have a comprehensive plan.
Do you think that we don't have a comprehensive plan that meets the statutory requirements?
I no longer doubt that.
So you agree that we do have a comprehensive plan that meets statutory requirements?
Yes, I do.
Would you like to retract anything in your letter that states otherwise at this time? Would you like to prepare a correction for the record?
Well.
And publish that as well?
I'll consider that. I'll, I'll give that some thought.
On that note, then, Mr. Messick, do you mind just quoting specifically what the comprehensive plan entails?
I did not bring that memo, but essentially it is any adopted plan of a local government unit that is comprehensive in terms of dealing with the entire planning jurisdiction of the municipality. Cases have said that you have a comprehensive map that shows the whole territory, and you have an ordinance that applies across the board to the whole territory. Then that in and of itself is sufficient for a comprehensive plan under the statute. The word has been there since 1928, and it has come up from time to time. And obviously, circumstances today are much different than they were 50, 60 years ago in terms of what planners do and what planning is able to produce. And North Carolina has, what I just told you, is the, is the legal standard. Now, obviously, in many jurisdictions, the kind of plan Mr. Terry is talking about is, is, is popular. It has a lot of benefits to it. It is used a lot, and we are gradually, I think, evolving to a position where, you know, more of that is going to be seen than, than not. And the issues of whether or not a proposed development is considered to be consistent, which is also not defined, or not, is going to be, become more important. There are many jurisdictions that, that require consistency as a matter of law before an application can be approved. We're not there, and we may not ever get there, but we're headed more in that direction than we used to be. So it is, it's an evolving process in principle. But as of today, we don't have to have that, and if we did have to have that, you perhaps make a determination whether it is or isn't consistent, but it's not subject to judicial review. So it is sort of half a loaf or nothing at all. So it's a step in, at that direction, but it is certainly not a requirement at this point. Planners are much more able to assimilate information than they used to, and they do a lot more things than they, than they used to, and we rely upon that much more than we used to. And we are getting there, but we're not, it's not an absolute requirement at this point in terms of the way in which we evaluate requests. If the plan, if you did have a written plan, then you also have a request to amend that plan at the same time as you have a request to amend the text or amend the map. So that's, that's the way for the future. If somebody thinks that the plan needs to change, they're going to ask you to do that. And you have done that already from time to time. So it is not something that is necessarily an easy process, but and you all certainly have the calls to that on whether something is consistent or whether, in your opinion, is in the best interest of the town. But that's, at least as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, that's the state of the law today.
Okay, and I again acknowledge that I am today better educated on that based on your legal tutorial that you offered us today. That being said, if, if with that, armed with that new knowledge, or I'm reviewing that ordinance again today, I would still stumble over the use in the Exhibit B to that ordinance, the term adopted comprehensive plan, because I think that causes people to ask the question, well, where is that document?
I don't believe it says that. I think it says comprehensive plan, including the future land use plan and any other adopted plans. I don't think it says an adopted comprehensive plan.
Is there, do we have, is there anywhere that we have the lists of things that would be part of the comprehensive plan? Because I've never even heard it either. It seems like if that, if we are, if we have a collection of things that we consider part of the comprehensive plan, there should at least be a list of what that includes.
Well, that's through the board to determine whether that is so or not. And the board has to like to make that recommendation.
But the statute says a comprehensive plan is what?
It does. It says a comprehensive plan shall be used in order to evaluate zoning requests.
I don't know if that's something to be worried about.
It includes the, the language plan and any other adopted plans. You have a land plan, you have subdivision regulations, you have stormwater, you have flood hazard, you have all sorts of land use ordinances and regulations that are involved. Or could be involved.
Not to be argumentative, Mr. Messick, but Exhibit B first sentence says, "The action taken by the board of commissioners in approving application rezoning 241404 is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan." And again, armed with the new knowledge I have, my objections to the wording in this document might be reduced to just striking that word "adopted."
You've adopted the, the ordinance, you've adopted the map, you've adopted all of these different things. That's the same language that has been used in every zoning ordinance that you all have adopted in the last several years. There's nothing new about that. It's not new.
Okay. I understand your position. Hope you understand mine.
The statute includes the word "adopted."
Okay. Commissioner Baldwin, any other questions?
Not at this time, but later on.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I was going to talk about the Chadon Conservation Partnership for a minute. We had another meeting on Thursday. Is it Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And I got to attend this, Tom, and I have to say, it's a really good, engaged group. Everything that we talked about, I guess, we went through this document that I'm looking at right now that is called Model Natural Resources Conservation Ordinance. And basically, we talked about how we would make decisions, Mr. Paul Becker and Mr. Royal over there, consensus versus majority kind of thing. And then we started going through this ordinance and making edits, and I thought it was a really useful little exercise. So I was glad to go, and hopefully you guys will get to go again. Everything is on this Chadon Conservation Wiki site, so if you guys don't have access to it or whatever, I'm glad to send it because I think it's, it's a good group and it's going to be a good little thing for us to get done. So that's all I have.
Could you send an email to me?
We can practice it easily.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, if there are no other Commissioner Concerns, do I hear a motion to go in a closed session?
I have motion to go in a closed session for Senator G S 143-181183, consult with attorney regarding pending location.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will go in a closed session as soon as the, as soon as the opportunity to.